Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is the Eastham Elementary School Committee. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access channel eight and through the town's website at www.eastham-ma.gov. Thank you all. There is, we do have a quorum present, and I appreciate it. For those who come, a change, a change in agenda. We will not be doing superintendent's report tonight, and no, we're having expend, uh, excuse me, a surplus report tonight. Those two areas are off. Citizens, we do have a citizen here. Would you care to speak?
I'm just, I'm observing.
We're such a duty, she's, I, something from town, I assume?
Yes, I am stamped, and I want to hear what's going on.
Okay, thank you for coming. Appreciate. Um, priority business, our first priority business is Chief Adam Bohian, and Adam, thank you for coming very much, and we appreciate all your efforts of you and your department. So please.
Yeah, good afternoon. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. Give a quick update on some of the security efforts we're taking at the school. As always, I'm restricted a little bit on how much detail I can go into about our security protocols and school security protocols, but can offer you a little bit of what we've been doing over the last couple of months at the school. As has been with the last few years, Officer Carrie D'Angelo from our department is assigned as our liaison to Mr. Crosby in the elementary school. Carrie is formerly a school resource officer up in Nauset High School, so she's very familiar with school security protocols. And kind of the school environment as it relates to law enforcement. So she does a great job. She's also, she loves interacting with the younger kids. You'll see her on the playground, having lunch with the kids, kicking a soccer ball. She, she loves that stuff. So she's a good fit up there at the school. She's not assigned there full-time, but she, I looked this morning, she's, every time she goes up there, she creates some paperwork, a call for us to show that she's been there, and is close to 20 calls already this year, where she's been at the school for either a drill or just having a slice of pizza on a Friday with the kids and just, just interacting up at the school. So she's there regularly. We have conducted two drills already this school year. I won't go into too much detail about them, but the drills are a good opportunity to kind of test the school's emergency protocols and the police department's emergency protocols. And it also gives the staff an opportunity to ask any questions. Maybe something at the school has changed over the winter, over the summer. You know, something's in a different place, and questions come up all the time about different security concerns and, and what should be done in different situations. So it kind of gives us a chance to refresh on all of that stuff. Officer D'Angelo has also attended two staff meetings already this year, which I think is very important because again, that gives the staff a chance without the students there to kind of evaluate their own situation, their own classrooms, whatever their environment is, and ask any questions to Officer D'Angelo. And also allows us to evaluate all that, that as well, and make any changes that we need to make year to year. This is also really important. I think Officer D'Angelo, at least once a year, goes into each class at the school. She also involves someone from the National Park Service to come in. They're a close partner with us in really any response we have in our town, because they're right here as a law enforcement partner. So we try to involve them so they have familiarity with the school as well. But they visit each classroom, and I think it's important because especially in an elementary school, the age difference is so great between pre-K and fifth grade. In the middle school and the high school, we can kind of lump everyone together and have those conversations, but it's so important to address each age group separately. And it allows the kids to ask questions, and some of the questions, you know, you would, I'm sure you would imagine are, are kind of interesting. But it allows the officers to kind of target and speak directly to that age group. Obviously, the young kids, we're directing them, really, your job is to listen to your teacher, do what your teacher tells you to, as they get a little bit older in an emergency situation, whatever that may be, maybe the kids have a little more ability to, to think through the situation and make decisions on their own. So I think it's important to have those, those different looks at those different age groups. As far as the police department this summer, while the school was empty, we did, and each officer on our department had an eight-hour training at, in the school on emergency response. We set up some different scenarios for our officers. We have three officers on staff who are instructors on emergency responses, not just the schools, but any emergency response that we do. So Mr. Crosby was nice enough to set us up with the use of the school, and I think it's important, a lot of our response to emergency situations can be similar, whether we were responding to the school or responding to this building. But it's important for our officers to see the school and be in the school and know the layout of the school, the officers that may not be in there on a regular basis. So we were able to do that this summer. We'll probably look to go back next summer as well as go up to the new high school, because that's, that's a whole other, another animal for them to learn. I also, every time I do this, I want to say thank you to Mr. Crosby, Superintendent Clutchy, and really all the staff at the elementary school for the support that they give us in the, the training and the drills. Every one of these that I've attended, we, we usually do a little debrief afterwards, and some of the questions that come out of the staff are amazing, that they're thinking through these situations, and we can't answer every hypo- hypothetical question, what should I do here? What should I do there? But the fact that they're thinking through these things is really the name of the game, that what would my options be? Whether it was, you know, any type of urgency at the school, it could be just a fire alarm, you know, what are my options in this situation? And that's really what the training is that the staff and the students get, is that there is no definitive answer to every situation. We want you to think through, and you are authorized to make the best decision for you in the situation. And they do, they think through, and some of the questions are amazing. Like, I didn't even think of that, you know, and a, a teacher asked that question, and we're able to talk through that situation and give some advice. So the support from your teachers, your staff at the elementary school is amazing. They do a great job of trying to prepare themselves for any emergency that occurs. Any questions I can answer?
Adam, thank you very much. I really appreciate the presentation.
You're welcome.
And I know you need to leave, so please, you're welcome to excuse yourself.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great day. I'd like to welcome our Assistant Superintendent Kristen Anderson. She has joined us virtually. Thank you, Kristen, for joining us. And next on the agenda, we have Nurse Leader Mary Ellen Reed. Mary Ellen, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Ann. I have a little presentation I'm going to share, so I just sent a send request.
We're getting, we're getting, well, you two, they're doing two meetings at one time, Mary Ellen, so. And by the way, I have some, I have some information from the, um, Matt's conference.
It seems like that.
Should be okay, Mary Ellen, now they said.
Okay. I'm trying to find the tab here. Let me see. This is, this is the one I want to share. Okay, can you see my presentation now?
Not yet.
Uh, I know I've shared it with Amanda Larpier. If this isn't working, she could show it to you.
Can you share, Amanda? Help me, Mary Ellen, with that, please. Is the town not allowing you?
Well, it says on, it says I'm on screen one, and that I have it on my.
It's, it's on now, Mary. It's on.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Terrific. Okay. All right, are we full screen now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks so much. Um, good evening, everyone. I'm, I'm Mary Ellen Reed, I'm the Director of Health Services for the District. And I'm really delighted to be here this evening to share some district health information and to highlight some of the fantastic Eastham Elementary School Wellness Initiatives. In the words of Laura Bush, "There is a very close tie between good health and good education." With that in mind, I will focus this evening on providing clinical health office updates and discussing our district farm-to-school goals and plans to improve food literacy through food tastings. "School nurses help students be healthy, safe, and ready to learn." I'll begin with providing some clinical updates. Across the 23-24 school year, Karen LaBranche had almost 3,500 school nurse office visits and 2,644 care coordination contacts. The percentage of students who returned to class was 94%. Some examples of case management contacts might be advising a family on providing a primary care physician or consulting with them about their child's medical condition so that we can best meet their healthcare needs while they're in school. This slide further breaks down the types of nursing visits. 21% are related to injury. 55% are illness-related, and 24% are behavioral, emotional health office visits. Here you can see the different types of healthcare screenings done by the school nurse. School nurse health screenings are important because they help to identify potential issues early, ensuring timely intervention and supporting students' overall health and wellbeing, and ultimately academic success. Pictured here, we see Karen LaBranche doing a health screening, a hearing screening on an Eastham Elementary School student. There are 417 students across the district which have over 70 health-related conditions. For example, 155 of the Nauset students have food allergies and 197 students have asthma. To meet the unique needs of these students with medical conditions, school nurses write individual healthcare plans, or IHCPs. Here you can see an example of a healthcare plan for a fictitious student dog to give you a better sense of what an IHC safety plan involves. IHCPs focus on addressing the underlying, underlying healthcare conditions to optimize learning time and enhance educational outcomes. In the world of Malcolm X, when "I" is replaced by "we," illness becomes wellness. School nurses are educators. Carrying, caring, educate staff annually on how to safely manage life-threatening allergies in school. This past summer, several nurses got together to review our puberty education curriculum. We updated it, and we aligned it with the new Mass Health Education Standards, which were just recently released. School nurses deliver puberty education to fourth-grade students. In classrooms and also on STEM night, Karen uses glow germs to represent simulated germs and assigns the students the task of eliminating the germs through proper hand washing. Community partners also provide wellness and safety education for the Eastham school community. The Fire Department, for example, provided tick and fire safety education. School resource officers educate students and staff on lockdown procedures and how to respond to school emergencies to ensure safety. Eastham Elementary School is very good at encouraging fitness and walking. Pictured here is Memorial Day Walk, and just last week, they had a Veterans Day Walk. Annually, we order, we organize and host at least five vaccine clinics across the district, which are open to students, their families, and community members. Eastham Elementary School is hosting a vaccine clinic, in fact, this afternoon and early evening. The nursing team and the Wellness Committee planned and held a health fair last May for students, family, and community members. Over 600 people attended this successful event. At Nauset High School's Open House and also at our Spring District Health Fair, we set up a vaping education exhibit for parents. The Hidden in Plain Sight Room, the room provides parents with clues from a teen's bedroom to help them determine whether their child might be experimenting or using drugs or alcohol. Room decor, hidden compartments, and items to conceal use are located throughout the room. We are planning this year a district-wide campaign celebration, Eat Like a Rainbow, for our five elementary schools this spring. Eat Like a Rainbow songs will be sung across elementary music classes. My Plate art projects and paper mache fruits and vegetables will line the school halls. Funding from the HMI grant will fund the month-end celebration as Jay Manquita performs in a school-wide assembly at each district elementary school. I'll just show you a glimpse of what to expect. Last spring, we applied for the USD, a Fresh Fruits and Vegetable Grant Program. We received this grant. The goal of the Fresh Fruits and Vegetable Program is to introduce children to fresh fruits and vegetables to include new and different varieties and to increase overall exception, acceptance in consumption of fresh, unprocessed produce among children. Now I'm going to shift to some of the district farm-to-table initiatives. Across our seven district schools, we have various farm-to-school activities in place. Three of our schools have school gardens, and our middle school has a greenhouse. I understand from speaking with Bill Crosby that the foundation for an Eastham Elementary School garden has been laid, and gardening, planting efforts are underway. Wealthly Elementary School also has planted a retreus orchard. As we're in Year Two of an Action for Healthy Grant, which was for $150,000, this enables us to add hydroponic flex farm systems at each school and initiate many farm-to-school educational opportunities. Eastham Elementary School will also participate in the Meet the Farmer program this year. Growing hydroponically has provided a powerful teaching tool to support science and nutrition standards. Students learn about STEM, nutrition, and growing fresh food. Moreover, hydroponics farming offers a food source for our school cafeterias. Nursery branch has been there from the start of the hydroponics initiatives, from unit assembly to harvesting lettuce. The growth cycle for the lettuce is approximately 28 days. You'll see here the bounty of the lettuce harvest. The lettuce is used in the school lunch program across district schools. Hydroponics farming leads to Caesar salads, lettuce for sandwiches, and herbs for scratch cooking. This year, we also applied to participate in a grant, the Mass Farm-to-School Institute. Our Nauset team consisted of myself, Orleans Elementary School Principal Elaine Pender, the Director of Food Services Susan Murray, Nauset Middle School Greenhouse Teacher Rand Burkert, Nauset Middle School Changemaker Teacher Suzie Remillard, and Orleans Elementary School Nurse Jessica White, and the Nurse for Wealthly Elementary School Claudia Koch-Crosen. Across our school gardens, students are seen here enjoying salad, harvesting kale and corn, which was used in the school cafeteria. Michael McGregor said, "Real food doesn't have ingredients. Real food is the ingredient." Environmental education is a way to nurture child development and learning. Students are seen here participating in orchard planting at Wealthly Elementary School. Nature offers stimulation and engagement as well as relaxation and restoration. School gardens provide an opportunity to learn about nutrition, making healthy food choices, and creating sustainable lifestyles. Food tasting can be a powerful educational tool to enhance food literacy. The success of our grant initiatives would not be possible without the amazing support of our community partners. Susan Bork is a nutrition and food safety educator from the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension, and Stephanie Raine runs our Meet the Farmer program. School visits that she organizes have consisted from introducing children to several kinds of local greens, ranging from mild to spicy, sampling these projects, uh, this produce, and having fun learning about what can be grown on the Cape and meeting someone who grows food for a living. This year, our goal is to build upon the existing district farm-to-school programming to initiate a consistent district plan for food tastings and to establish the Eat Like a Rainbow campaign. Food tastings last year ranged from pumpkin pancakes to fresh strawberry sorbet. Seen here is sourcing locally, a school lunch item jerk chicken, jerk chicken, which was sourced locally from former Nauset student Drew Locke, who owns Hillside Poultry in Truro. Last year, Principal Crosby models making good choices and trying new foods for the students. Bill was a cheerleader at the food tasting and encouraged the students to participate. Children were invited to try three cheese options: cow's milk, mozzarella, goat cheese, cheddar, and sheep's cheese feta. Educational materials accompany these food tasting events. Successful food tastings lead to new, healthy menu options. With 81% of our students voting favorably, butternut fries have been added as a menu option. Our three food lu- literary, food literacy focus areas reinforce the concept that our body is the only one we've been given. So we need to maintain it, and we need to give it the best nutrition. Thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you very much, Mary Ellen, for all the information. I'm glad the community gets a chance to hear and see all that's being done at our schools in this area. Any questions for Mary Ellen?
Yes, I do have a question.
Chip, then Monica.
Because I know, um, my, I know my kids, um, always talk about the cookies at school. Are you including any sweets? Because that's the only one thing that I don't want to see. Because even if they like broccoli, for example, but if they see a cookie there, they will never go for the broccoli.
Um, I understand what you're talking about. Um, and I would, I would have to really look at our lunch menu, um, in order to determine whether we were offering cookies. I, I do believe it's rare, but without looking at the menu, I do know that Sue, Sue Murray is due to come to an upcoming meeting, um, as well. I think she is presenting in December. So she would be best prepared to answer that question. But I do agree, we need to, we need to focus and we need to highlight healthy options, um, in order for kids to, to encourage kids to make healthy choices.
Yes, and I have another question. I'm sorry.
Sure.
What about breakfast? Because the breakfast is full of sugar, too. Are you replacing the breakfast, too?
That is one of our biggest focus areas this year is breakfast. And so, um, I, I know in some schools, they have eliminated, they're starting to eliminate certain products. That's the, the, the starting point, certain sugary cereals and things like that. Um, I know that Susan is working on that. But I would agree, we, we, there's room for improvement there.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Sarah Higgins. I'm on the school committee, but I'm also a mom to a kindergartner. And I, my child is not, uh, does not have a gluten sensitivity, but I know that is something that is much more prevalent now, and I've gotten the feedback from other parents that it's, and then I've just seen the eating that occur, the food that's offered in the classroom or otherwise, that it, that it will often contain gluten. So when there's a gluten sensitivity, it's obviously, there's no kind of potential for a, for a severe allergic reaction, right, that would cause hospitalization. So I, I just was wondering if, if it was on the horizon of the health organization to, to look at how to manage that. Is it something that you guys have talked about or thought about, or if it's just, you know, if it's, if it's not a true medical allergic reaction, is it just not going to be considered?
Um, you're right. It's a bit of a double-edged sword. Um, you know, when something is documented as an, as a, a life-threatening allergy, um, we, um, and we have medical paperwork that supports that, we do try to offer safe alternatives. Uh, sensitivities, um, can get a little tricky. I, I would agree with what you're saying. Um, and, um, but I can tell you, one of the things that we've talked a lot about at our Wellness Committee is looking at our menus and determining whether we're offering enough vegetarian options to meet some of the needs and gluten-free options of, um, some of those individuals that have either dietary preferences or have dietary sensitivities. So I know that that has been brought up, but I would definitely say Sue would be better equipped to answer that question um, in terms of what her individual plans are.
Right, and I was just thinking, even beyond the food that's served in the school, because the parents I know whose children have sensitivity to dairy or gluten, they just send the food in with their child. But let's say if there's like a special celebration in the class and, and food is brought into it, it's, it's not. Okay.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons, um, your exact concern is why we're trying to move away from classroom food-related celebrations and be particularly, um, for safety, be, be particularly sensitive to the various needs that students have so that all students can participate. And there isn't anyone who's feeling excluded as a result.
Okay, great. That's what I needed to know. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. And for, just for reference point, your, the wellness policy will be brought here probably next month.
Okay.
This committee has not seen the new wellness policy that we finalized in the Policy Subcommittee, but thank you once again for all the information.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
See you soon. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Great. Administrator report. Uh, I have a very short report. I would like everyone in the community to know that I did, um, send Mary Shaw, who was the head of FinCon, a copy of our process for this year for preparing next year's budget. And she was very grateful to receive that, and probably the FinCon members will be coming in when we are in the process of preparing the budget, make it a little bit easier like it was last year. And the other thing I'd like to say is thank you, Mr. Crosby, and your class for all the work you've done with the veterans. Not only the walk and planting the flags, and thanks to the Nobley family for that, you know, they provide the flags, but for the gift, the boxing, the gifts, going to the boxing being sent out. My son was in the military for 25 years, including two years, two terms over in the Mideast. And he, he was a leader, and he would say, he felt badly when Mail Day came, and there were certain members of his unit that didn't ever receive anything. So of course, we sent lots of extra stuff, as did many of our family members, and he gave us actually names of other people just to send to. So it's greatly appreciated.
That was a grade-three initiative, too.
It is. Yeah. And that's about it for me, reports. And we will go on now to Bill.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. I, I don't have a whole lot. I know you, you do have my report. Um, and as you said, we, we enjoyed, um, you know, a nice Veterans Day remembrance and flag planting, and I was going to say thank you to the Nobley family. I believe they've been supporting this for probably 15 or 16 years. So, but it's a nice community event. Um, and also we completed some playground repairs, um, thanks to the $50,000 CPA grant from the, the town of Eastham, so that those repairs and upgrades have been made. And we're approaching the end of the, the first term, and we had parent conferences, uh, teacher conferences, and I believe those were really well-attended. And, you know, things are going as smoothly as possible. So if there's any, anybody have any questions or comments or anything, anything in my report that I could? Comments or anything, anything in my report that I could clarify or?
Thank you, Bill, for all your efforts. I definitely, every person in that building, they're all, they're great with all the kids.
Thanks.
The next piece of the, for our agenda today is um superintendent punches not here. Um excepted good gifts, grants and fundraising.
Mm-hmm.
Are you all copies of the grants and fundraising that were, that have been given to the school? I just seen a motion for, as a school committee to accept these, these monies.
I make a motion to accept the uh two grants that we received.
I second that.
Uh we have one. We have, we have. There are gifts to, there are gifts to, there are gifts and grants.
Oh, yes.
Just widen your motion, please, to accept.
I make a motion to accept both the gift and grants.
Second, thank you. And all, any more further discussion, open.
No.
May I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All unanimously accepted. Thank you. Uh the next is the twenty four, twenty five enrollment. Did you want to comment on this bill?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, we have, you know, the numbers will be given to us October first is the. Date that the state needs the numbers for to figure out that gets the budgeting gets done according to that, those numbers. And I, we've stayed stable. I mean, we actually have one, one extra child, which is wonderful. May they all keep coming. And so if you have the numbers and any questions on it, that Bill could probably help as far as I can.
Yeah, no, you're right though. I mean, this is my tenth year here and we've really stayed very stable.
You were going to sandwich Bill.
I know, I know, believe me. Um what was I gonna say? Um oh, but we just, I think there's probably four in the queue that are.
Yeah.
Coming in, yes, or in the process of registering about four new students at different grade levels.
That's great, great to hear. Thank you very much. Uh the, the twenty. The mass conference review. Uh Monica, did you go to the mass conference or you're getting to go? Okay. Sarah, I'll let you go first. I know you were there for the sa- saving sailing ship, sailing the course.
Charting the course.
Yes, and your other consultants.
Yes, so I went on Friday, I went to one um. Of the, the breakout groups Friday morning that was about um. Funding and managing special education uh costs, so that was very interesting, given. What I had seen that.
Any insights for that?
Um I'll, I mean, she, it's, the, the most of them are geared toward bigger districts. So the woman who gave the presentation, she was, her job is specifically. She has to earn back half of her salary every year and get in like optimizing the special education program. So she was just giving like tips and tricks about. You know, how you can schedule the people filling out the, the forms for it, how the funding works, things like that. Um. But she did mention um about having the um special education stability fund. And you know, that some towns or cities chose to have that. Um and one interesting thing I was um. That I thought was, she said if your taxpayers didn't want to cede that initial condition of the fund, that if you had any. Um surplus at the end of your budget, that you could, you know, even if you had five thousand dollars, actually you could just put that in and, and start it. Off, so that was interesting. Um but hopefully I'll be able to get the slides and um share with the appropriate people. And then I went to the required school committee training for chart the course, so that eight hour requirement, which was um. Very interesting.
Lots of information.
As well, yes, and um. And yeah, that was a good conference.
I was, I was at the conference on Thursday. I went to first initially in the morning, I went to the general session and that was Tim Shriver who spoke. If the name's familiar, his mother was Susan Shriver and she started the Special Olympics program. He is now, he was, he was educated for, I think he said sixteen years. He now is vice chair, vice chair, I believe, the total of the Special Olympics. But he also has a program called the Dignity Index. And that's what he talked about for an hour and a half and could have listened to him all day. It's he developed, I think, I only have one unfortunately, I couldn't get them to share. It's index that goes from one to eight and it goes basically from. Build up rather than tear down and be curious enough, furious at people. And it was just an appropriate time of the week, in two days after the election where everyone was still emotionally charged from the results of that. And he was just really very positive. He's did his grad, grad work at um in this area at Yale, which is where our program. Comes out of that we're using in our school. And he told, he started off by telling a story, he said, my name, he said, most of us. Can say things without realizing how we're actually being negative to someone. He was saying a while ago, he was in, I think going into an elevator, I think somewhere in Tennessee in that area, he said. And I get in, there was a man in the, you know, typical western dress, you know, the boots, the spurs, some jeans. He said, and he looked, he said, I don't mean to insult you, but anyone will tell you you look like a Kennedy. He said, I just smiled and said, get it a lot and just left it right there. They said words can be very hurtful without realizing they are. We want to be grateful, so his whole focus is basically saying, be really careful on how, what you say and how you say it to people. So I really enjoyed that. The um, the other um section that I went to was about, again. Financing between community and school committees. And a lot of the, a lot of suggestions were things we are doing here, like basically talking to our school committee members, not screaming to our FinCon members. Unfortunately, again, it was like presented by someone, the major presenter was from New Bedford. And so when you talk of big city versus small community, there is a difference. It was interesting. Again, I think everything they were talking, should be doing, we are doing it here as a school committee to, to, to interact with our community leaders. So those were the two I went to, but thank you all. Uh the next piece is the FY twenty five expenditure report. Jia is not here today. The new, we got the report a little bit later today. If you have any que- you know, the only thing that, and I think she put it in the email and she sent it. With the line that used to have that was for negotiations, those dollars have now been, been split up into what they apply to in the contract. So that's why that line is now blank. There is no blank, blank there. If you look at it and you have questions, please email me. And I'll be glad to, you know, get the answers as clearly and quickly as possible for you. Uh let's see, as I said, we don't have this surplus. Um. The, the other reports I would like to just have touch on quickly, um the committee reports. The policy subcommittee, I to policy and as I mentioned to Mary Ellen, we are doing the final, final review of the wellness policy. It's a, it's a lengthy policy, but it's really thorough. The nurses who put, I sat in the initial meeting. The nurse who puts it in really thorough job and making sure all areas were covered. And it ties right into state law, state policies and state legal appropriate places.
Uh and just to confirm, the policies now are the clean copies, so.
What you'll be getting will be the clean copy, yes.
There should be no typos.
Right, there shouldn't be, but then again, you never can tell. We have on the last channel, it's a clean copy, so. Again, and, and we've been, and someone at the mass conference, the person that works with me on, on policy, was. Trying to get to find Jim Hardy, who's now retired, but is working as consultant for mask. Because he's got the rest of our bulk of policies, he's made sure they're all finalized and clean copied. And we're supposed to be getting them back so we can present the whole policy manual to everyone, hopefully by February at the latest to say, please accept it. Because I'll have left the system by the time, this is a very two year project that hopefully will finally take place by the end, by wintertime this year. Uh let's see, what else do we have? The superintendent search committee, we gave, we got a report of that, if you mind, just a quick report.
Sure.
This general, very general.
Don't say that we.
No, you don't, just don't give names or anything like that if you have those names. If you've been given names at this point, don't use any names, personnel issue.
For the superintendent.
Right, okay, so we've hired a consultant to help with the superintendent search process. We have a meeting on Thursday to finalize the, um I guess you'd call it brochure, but kind of. Like the job posting advertisement that they'll use. Um we also will be finalizing the survey that's going to be going out to. Um community members, you know, everyone that would be touched by the new superintendent, so we're, we're reviewing that now and. This Thursday night, we should finalize that and also deciding um. To have an extended, deciding who the players would be in an extended search committee, so who, what other. Parents, um administrators, people in the community, people in administration that would help um. To, to, you know, do, interview the final um candidates. So uh we're, we're in good shape for our timeline and um. We all feel very positive about it.
Thank you, Sarah. It's a big job, haven't done the last time around, yes.
Why, we have more times.
We do, you do have more time. Okay, Transportation's Devin, he is not here tonight, but he gave us a full report at the joint meeting. And they're still looking at that issue of buses, do we replace, do we not, what are we doing? That piece. I'm up here all thousands of cents down, which I did not write down, so I can't help you anymore at that, at that point. Uh the parents group, parents, did you?
I haven't, I haven't been in any meetings yet.
Have you, did you go to the parents group? I haven't had a parents group recently.
They had the one in September, but I haven't seen.
They have some of, you know, and they, I can report, I mean, they have, they have some events planned. They had a Halloween party recently, you know, for the kids to dance and things and um. There's another event coming up and they're also planning a big fundraiser for March, that fun run that you've done, they've done in the past, you know, so. I believe the executive board is meeting tomorrow night, so.
And we did um. And they organized a potluck dinner for the parent teacher.
Oh, right. Very nice.
That's the nice thing they always do.
Yes.
No, the parents group is very supportive, as I've said, yeah.
Okay, and let's see, um wellness behavior has that.
No.
No, no, me, okay. And I'm sure, I wrote them all down, so I wouldn't forget any of it. And Bill's school council is tomorrow, am I correct?
Thursday, yes, after school, yeah.
Okay, thank you all very much. Are there any, any particular items, people I've seen future in, as a future gender item?
When should we say, am I going to attend that communications, so potential subcommittee?
You can, we can, you want to report on communicate, potential commit, sure.
Well, just.
Potential, yes.
But just letting.
Yeah.
Monica and Deborah and Devin know.
Let us all know about it.
Yes, there's a potential, that email that we got from Ann about the commute, there's a potential new subcommittee on communications. Um that meeting is actually going to be not what it said in the email, but on December twelfth. So I will in the morning, so I'll go to that. It's not clear whether the elementary schools. Are going to be participating in that.
Thank you. Any other subjects or items, any, let's see, presented. We will find some, I'm sure, before the next meeting, because I, we, again, the surplus. Do we have, do you know?
I don't have anything.
We don't have anything surplus, okay, Bill. All right, so may I, next item, I'm generous approval of the minutes of October fifteenth.
I made a motion to approve the minutes of October fifteenth.
A second. Monica's second, um any further, any discussion on the minutes?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have the next meeting dates listed and a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. I really appreciate it.